I'd like to call out a couple of meeting door please. This time a clerk called up.
Brian Herring, President.
Brian Herring.
Mitch Magnus, President. Johnny Savage. Brian Oswald, President. Bill Boswell, President. Joel Williams, President. Dana Taylor, President.
Thank you. We have several guests with us tonight and a first has been Pastor Jim Bryant from our Gaither Community Church. He is going to lead us in the prayer and also we have troop 132, am I not right? Well, a gentleman came up here, Stephen Christensen, he said he's going to lead us in the pledge, so if we'll all stand at this time and Mr. Brian will lead.
I think it's a very unique opportunity to be here to do this particularly with this group. I mean, this is a group we've been praying for and when we look at our protective agencies and first responders, we lift you in prayer, guys.
Thank you.
In fact, we did that today, this morning in our meeting of pastors. And to be representing them here with this group, well, it just makes me feel like what a pastor is automatically known for. First of all, praying, then preaching, and then taking an offering. And I think this would be a good time. But I do want to lead us in prayer and for the work of this organization to let you know that the pastors of this area, across denominational lines, are supportive and want to do every one thing we can for the growth of our community. So may we pray. Heavenly Father, I thank you so much for the opportunities you give us to serve together. We thank you for our community, for all of the gifts, the skills, the leadership, Father, that we have, and very, very importantly, Father, for our protective agencies, our police force, our firefighters, our medical personnel, the first responders. Father, we lift them in prayer and ask for you to give safety to them throughout all of the things that they do, day in and day out. We pray, Father, now for this meeting tonight, we ask, Father, for the decisions and the hearts and the minds of this group as they work to affect a better community for all of us. That may, Father, we give you honor as we give these honor, as we pray for them and ask you to secure them and their positions, enable them in their decisions, and may, Father, we have a better community as a result. And we pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Stephen, you'll step right up there.
Would everybody please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also with us tonight, we have the Chamber of Leadership class. If you all would mind standing up there, we'll give you a round of applause. It might be sitting in your seats, though, or mine too.
Did they want to start tonight?
You talk about your seat tonight.
When I go, you go with me.
Okay. Okay, we have a minute of August 25th submitted for approval.
Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion to approve in a second. In discussion. Should be in no discussion. All in favor, by.
Aye.
All opposed, same. Minute passed. We're running the department reports. Any department head want to say anything at this time?
Yeah, financial statements sent out last night. I was quick turn around on the fourth Thursday, yes, but they're out and if you guys have any questions, please feel free to contact me.
I will point out that we're still in a surplus current time. We have a surplus throughout thus far in the year of $62,000 in the general fund compared with a deficit budget due this time of $293. It's $356,000 better off than going up. We hope that continues.
If our growth continues, that'll be good. And we've got a good financial reputation. I'll bump that up. Okay, will anybody else got anything?
I guess I got something. Parks America, my workers, we went out and with the help of independent living, we've repainted everything, all the pavilions, picket panels, and touched up the rallies in the park for the rally coming up. We did that this week, so I just want to thank independent living, all my guys for all the hard work this week. It looks really good.
Does somebody want to cover the rally since we are here in this meeting? Dana, do you want to?
I can if that's okay with everybody. The rally is called Ride the Ozarks Rally. It's an open bike rally to anybody that wants to come. You don't have to ride a motorcycle. It's October 6th through the 9th. It'll be down on Lake Harrison. There's going to be bands on the stage. There's going to be food vendors, what they call hard vendors, which sell bike accessories, clothing, crafts, things like that. Kickoff is at noon on Thursday, the 6th, and then it's going to end with church service at noon or it's going to end on noon on Sunday, but we're going to have church service that morning. So invite everybody to come. If you don't have a motorcycle, that's fine. You can come and enjoy and have a good time and enjoy some great music.
I think they are expecting 2,000 at least.
Well, the projected numbers are 3,000 to 5,000, conservatively 25 to 45.
It'd be a great asset to boost our community, too.
All of our hotel rooms are booked and we're booking some of the primitive camping at the fairgrounds right now, so there's going to be a lot of people here.
So come on down. You'll have a good time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Can you tell us where we are with the check? Tell us where we are with the sum of the funds.
They're supposed to be here. They got backed up. The company that's going to come back and replace the line, so we're hoping to hear from them anytime. They said they're hoping to be here by the end of September. And then they said it'll take about three weeks to get anything done. So whenever they're going to give us a week in advance notice and say we'll be there on this date, so we're just waiting on their calls back.
We have a question, Father. Okay, we'll move on down to committees. Mr. Magnus, I guess you're up.
Okay. Payroll grid, police and fire, and we went through this in committee in advance for a vote here tonight for approval as of 10-1, putting it in the last quarter of fiscal year. I've been over it with Luke quite a bit. I'm going to ask him to make some comments and I'd like him to add some input. As we went through this, and I have actually lost sleep in regard to the grid, especially as late, and I've reconsidered everything and gone through. When we started this process, my hope was that we could put something together within the last eight to 10 years without touching it. And I said at the time that one of my big concerns, we not only wanted to make this sustain any legal challenge, but that it would be fiscally responsible for that period of eight to 10 years. As we look at it, the biggest problem that we have is the insurance cost. And while I have no doubt that the grid as it currently stands could be sustained with the tax money coming in and the allocations from the general fund, if we don't do something about the insurance issues that the city has faced, we're going to have a deficit starting either next year or the year after, in these funds. And again, and I'll point this out, and it's easy to say these things, we have sat and waited for these decisions, but we're going to have to take action in regard to our insurance costs. Or my fear is next year at this time, if we put this grid into effect, whether it's tonight as of 10-1 or effective January 1, what we're going to have to end up doing is coming back and lowering that grid, but if we're going to have a deficit sometime next year or the year after. So I challenge the council. We need to sit down and go through that and find some way to remediate those increases that we've been sustaining, but they are not sustainable fiscally. Luke, you got anything to add to that?
I mean, you've put on a lot of points there. If I may?
Yes.
One of the things that we said at the very beginning of the grids was that we'd get it all done and we'd go back and see if we could pay for it, if we had the funding to do that. And we came up with an amazing grid to give our fire and policemen raises that are well deserved. We got slots where we thought everything should go. It matches up with other cities our size. Everything is great from that same point. I don't know that anybody has went back and said, can we afford this now? And that was the one thing, our very, very first meeting said, can we afford it? Yes and no. I think he's alluded to it a couple times, insurance cost. If we have a 30% increase just in two years, we will put this grid into place and then we'll come back and then we're going to have to cut their wages 10% and then they're all going to be asking for your heads, and mine too. But being fiscally responsible, I couldn't do my job without telling you the risks that are involved with putting this grid into place, whether it be tonight, whether it be January, whether it be five years from now. It's my duty to tell you that I've crunched the numbers. I put in the numbers of 30% next year and we have a deficit budget. I never, ever thought with a new sales tax that we would have a deficit budget in year three. Is that right?
Yes.
That's just not what I would look at. Now, we bought lots of equipment and much-needed equipment, and that's great, but at some point in time, we need to make sure that we're not losing ground in this money that we're setting back for police and fire. We really need to make sure that going forward, we've got enough available to make up for the lost equipment that we haven't replaced in the 30 years prior to all of us coming on board. We need to get that in place, lined out, and also, you know, part of that way, the taxes for the raising of their wages. So we need to make sure we have an all-around picture of what's going on. Because right now, I think everybody wants to see new equipment, new buildings potentially in the future, but at this point, I don't, I can't tell you that that's going to happen if we continue to have a deficit budget. Now, one of the things that we also need to decide tonight is part of that grid is longevity pay and certificate pay. And the reason I bring both of those up is because I've heard from a couple different people about it. It was not my understanding that if we pass the grid, longevity pay would go away. Is that everybody else's understanding? And this is the feedback portion that I need to...
When we started the analysis, we said that essentially longevity pay is baked into the grid. That's what we said.
Is everybody aware of that? Again, feedback portion of the time here in council meeting. I see some people nodding their head. I don't see everybody nodding their head. And I want to make sure that going forward, if this is going to be our grid, we've got, I mean, this is hard-line decision time right now. Is that what everybody understands?
That is what I understood when we started the analysis, and I think that even in our subcommittee and committee meetings, that was an understanding.
Okay. So everybody's aware.
So the other issue is certificate pay.
Yes. And certificate pay only comes up in the police department at this time. I don't know what your thoughts are. I have not heard either way, other than just from a few questions that I've had, of whether or not that stays or whether or not that goes if you adopt the grid. So that's, again, needs to be decided tonight.
Well, if we implement it, it needs to be decided tonight.
Correct.
Yeah, when we started this, to take Magnus out, I never referred to any of the payroll information. So as you and I discussed it, I was looking at line items. So I had no consideration of certificate pay. In other words, it's included in the grid vote by our analysis because we looked at total payroll as a line item and by position and not individually for each person. Does that make sense?
It does make sense.
So in our analysis, we never considered certificate pay. So that will have to be decided as well, whether or not we include that or don't.
If you include it as part of the grid or if you do not and pay it separately.
Right, this current board was $8,500.
Annually?
Yes.
Single line item on the budget?
Single line item.
Is it on the...
It's not on the...
It's included in salaries.
It's included in salaries, but it is a line item within the salary.
It's not a line item on the budget or our... In other words, it's never disclosed.
Yep.
It's on the salary.
It's included in the salaries on the line item.
Same way, longevity. It's put in there same way. Do you know what certificate pay is, is the question? And Chief, if you explain what certificate pay is, they may have, they may give them a more understanding if they want to include it or throw it out.
Certificate pay, we follow the state standards requirements. There's five standards for law enforcement. They go from basic to senior. We pay $25 a month for each one, starting with junior or general to senior. To receive those, it's a mix of years of service, education, and training hours. So more education, less training, less years of service, or vice versa. To even get your general, you must go to college and receive English 1 and 2 to even start to go up the steps. So what the certificate pay does for us, we get better educated employees because you're going to have to go to college to get their English. And if they want to cut the years of service and training time, they go to college and get more college hours. So we're actually paying to have a better educated officer at our department for very little money, actually. Right now, we pay $8,000 a year. Pretty cheap to help retain our people and have better educated officers.
And it's less of payroll. It's more for incentive than anything else.
Yes. And it's a state standard. So we followed the state standard to receive those certificates. It's not something we made up.
Do they have any time limit on when they acquire this certificate, whenever?
It depends on years of service, education, and training. Example, if you have very little college and you just follow years of service and training, it will take about 15 years to get a senior certificate. If you get more educated, it will drop that down in years to get your senior. So, you know, it all depends on where you're at in education and training hours, obviously, and years of service. I can tell you, since we started this, and we did start this at the time of the tax, we have officers that went back to college and they have finished up their masters and bachelors. We have, we still have them in college to finish up those degrees, and we had a bunch go and get their English 1 and 2 so they can continue to start going up. So the certificate pay, the way it was set up, has worked the way I'd hoped it would to get better educated officers. And we pay it once a year in December. They must be employed the entire year and be employed on December 1st to receive it. So if they leave any time during the year, they do not get certificate pay.
Is this a lump sum payment?
Yes, one time.
It might be $25 a month, but they need to pay a pretty much check on December 1st.
Who pays for the college?
They do.
They pay a buck.
They pay all their... We pay training hours, but if they have to go to college, they pay that. We do allow them to go to college during work hours if it has to be a class, since it benefits the department and city, but we don't pay for the training, for the college hours, or if they go to college to finish their bachelors or masters, which we have officers right now that went back to college who are doing that now.
Sometimes they have the new classes called after.
Yes.
Luke, how much, how much in last year's budget? I'm assuming was it $8,000 or $8,500?
$8,500, I believe, is the 26th budget.
How much of that last year now, 2015, that hard money spent? Okay? Have you done what that money?
It's probably $8,000. I mean, it doesn't change much.
Okay. How much of that was spent and how much of it was not spent? In other words, did they spend their entire $8,000 allotment?
Whatever he would have given me, I'm pretty sure it's close to that. I don't know that it's right.
May I ask you something, Hope?
Yeah. A lot of people acquired their certificates. But they were expected to...
I'm going to go ahead and say this for what it's worth. This has been the most frustrating piece of work that we've ever handled in anything that I've ever been involved with inside this city. Period. No exceptions. Trying to get these guys out here and these ladies a much-deserved pay raise should not be this difficult, but it has become this difficult because we get too many surprises in the process. Way too many surprises. The reason that man loses sleep over there is because something else comes up and something else comes up and something else comes up. And our job as a council is to be fiscally responsible for the dollars that the taxpayers in the city airs, and we're handicapped trying to do the right thing because we're not getting the information. And this is beyond frustrating. Who do I, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, but it would have been nice to have known about certificates of pay. I understood from the get-go that we were taking consideration on longevity pay from the get-go, and that was built into what we were going to look at. But certificates of pay never came up for discussion, and I hate to say it this way, but I will. Now is not the time for that to have come up. It's a single line, it's a single item, whether it's $8,000 or $8,500, and our police department is expected to get that. Now, if we approve the grid for the rest of 2016, effective 1 October, that's not on the grid.
It's not on the grid.
And that will go away.
Unless we vote to have that separate. Again, we were looking at total salary.
Okay, and I understand that. But if we approve this grid for the rest of this year, that goes away because it's not there. And it's not on, it's not on the grid.
What goes now under...
I will tell you, and we've talked about it, and you probably have been involved, but if longevity and the grid goes, excuse me, and the certificate goes away, and we approve the grid for this year and next year, for the remainder of this year, we will prorate, we will prorate the certificate pay if you don't change it and the longevity pay.
I'm not even saying that you have to get rid of the certificate pay. I'm just asking the question.
And I appreciate the fact being asked. My point is, pardon my expression, why the hell did I not hear about this 90 days ago? I'm just coming to the chase, folks. This is the reason that I am so frustrated with this. Excuse me, Brian, I apologize to you. But I am so frustrated in this piece of trying to get something done above board where there is nothing hidden to the taxpayers of the city because they're watching us. They're watching what, how much money these guys are going to get and how much money these gals are going to get. Okay? They're holding our feet to the fire.
We argue that you didn't know it's in the, you say it's not in the budget, it's in the line item. There is a salary page that goes along with each salary line item in the budget.
We could argue this all night long. I'm not going down that road. I'm just telling you what my level of frustration is. Okay? Because I will accept the responsibility of the fact that it was on there, and if I missed it, I missed it, and that's on me. But I will say this again. We sat down to start this process on the grid with everything on the table, and if we were able to get the longevity pay picked up and absorbed into it because we discussed it, why was the issue of the certificate pay not brought up so at least we could absorb it and put it in our discussion?
And in a way, it is because it's in that figure, and I understand what you're saying, that we looked at total dollars. So essentially, just like longevity is baked into, the certificate pay is baked into that. Now, in saying that, it was not disclosed. You're absolutely correct. And it is frustrating, like I say, when we got to this point, when we do these analysis, these analyses, and we go back and look at it, and you try, you know, when we realize that we were looking at a 10% increase in insurance, it was under the assumption that we were going to be able to see some sort of progress. And again, just in regard to the park department, we've got a major expense for fix access coming along. There's no plan right now to take care of that deficit. And I'm trying to prevent that with police and fire pay.
Refresh my memory real quick. Based on the grids, annually with regards to insurance, how much of a percentage bill did you put in there from year to year?
Only 10%. Now, we, the last one we gave you was a 30% increase over five years.
Right, that's what I'm talking about. The one that we looked at, that at the end of five years, total police and fire are $650,000 in that. Correct? Right, Luke? I mean, that's a ballpark figure, but it's close. So that has a 30% build into for insurance annually?
Yes.
Stretched over five years? 150%?
And the reason we did that for five instead of the 15 that we've given before was, obviously in 15 years, that stuff can run off and out. We're hoping that over five years, we can be more consistent, and it was more accurate of a forecast.
Let me ask you a couple more questions then.
Yeah.
Because you, Brian, Mary Jean, and others have beat this thing trying to do these folks right, and these folks work their tails off to get this passed so they can operate decent wage to the people. I have a lot of worry and concern in the fact that five years of today's economy is a very dangerous thing to play with with a budget. And my experience of this type of thing is with an organization that, quote, "made its own money." We don't make our own money. We have to live within our budget. We can't be x billion dollars in the red. What, I guess, my feeling is this, and Dan, you kind of alluded to it. With no, we have no, and we're going to discuss this certificate of pay situation, but we've put a pay raise in place effective 1 October for the rest of this current calendar year and use the grid for 2017, which includes a 30% insurance raise. Okay? That'll be relatively close to what we think will be correct based on insurance because next year could be a shot in the dark. We have, because we're swagging it. Correct? I mean, it really comes down to we're...
Yeah.
Okay? And I realize the work has been done to it, but my thinking is this, we don't need to bite off more than we can chew because the wrong thing to do, based on what Luke said, and I totally agree, is, is to go back to these guys and gals and... on what Luke said, and I totally agree, is, is to go back to these guys and gals that sit out here and say, "We're in trouble financially, and we're gonna have to cut your pay 10%." Correct?
And like I told everybody, when we started, my biggest fear was that we would put this grid into effect, and, and I, I was hoping we'd get five years down the road and not have to say that. Now we're looking at maybe two or three decades.
Because what we're discussing is pay. We haven't even talked about replacing a $1 million lighter truck yet.
No. And we, you know, we're committed to 30% of the, the allocation every, of their revenue every year going to equipment. Will that sustain that? Probably not. Certainly won't sustain that and a new fire station.
Yeah, that's not even.
That's not even a possibility. But now, again, we've got a mandate from the public because the tax passed. And working hard on this, the tax will support the pay raise and the grid. The problem literally comes down to insurance.
It'll support it up to a point.
Up to a point.
And the insurance is still part of the process.
I know, but I, like I say, tomorrow, if we just, if we voted, okay, we're gonna get rid of insurance, but we're not going to do, obviously. That problem goes away.
If, even if we didn't have the increase, I would, I'd be cheering on and saying, "Let's do this thing."
I'll, I'll tell you. And, and you're right, we've been a part of this process from the very beginning. Day one, I haven't missed one meeting. I've been at every one. It is frustrating, because I feel like every time we start, there's a new wrench that gets thrown in here. But I will tell you this, when it comes all down to it, the pay raise is a good, it's a good step program. We're playing with the idea that may go up in insurance and may not. Yeah, we may have to adjust our insurance plan for our, for our employees, but ultimately, that doesn't change the fact that we have a good step raise and that we need to move forward with it. At the end of it, if we have to adjust insurance issues, if we have to fight the insurance company, if we have to, you know, we don't have to cut them down by 10% in a year or two if it doesn't, if, if it happens. We can look at insurance issues and, and adjust that. That may be, we may lose some of our benefits, but at the end of the day, I'm, I do believe we have a mandate, and I think we need to move forward on this. I do have a question. When you saw that we were moving into the idea of certificate pay, did you see that baked into the rate, the, the step raises we're doing it, or you see that as a separate pay on top of everything?
Separate. I, I knew the. The longevity was built in, and I told the FOP officers it was built in, it will go away. They understood that, they ran them file, and so did the civilian employees. But certificate pay to me is a whole different, because it changes due to your education and training, how long you keep. If you want me to keep employees and keep costs down, I have to be able to offer something. And everything I have done in the last three years has stopped our turnover. If you wanna go back to spending three times what we're paying now, we can, but it's gonna hurt our team.
You've answered my question, that's all I really wanna know. With that in mind, and we can carry the discussion after this, but I wanna make a motion that we move forward and accept the step raises as it is, and include certificate pay separate from the step raises. And if we need to look back after this, and we need to evaluate this with insurance moving forward, we can. But I don't think there's any reason, we, we beat this at horse. Next, that, when it doesn't pass next month, are we gonna come back and we're gonna say, now, now that we're figuring 50% into this, or 40%, or whatever we're doing? We're just playing with a theoretic number. What, we have to look at that as a separate issue. The, the step raises as a whole is a good plan, and we need to move forward with it. So I make a motion, motion that we move forward.
I have a motion on the table and a second. I will call for a discussion of this matter.
This does not include certificate pay, correct?
No, sir. He said that's correct.
You do need to know what it's in.
It'll be a separate.
Right, it'll be a separate motion altogether.
Okay, does anybody, anybody else besides me like to talk with this matter?
When are you proposing this to go into?
October 1st, it's like, I didn't change anything from.
Okay, I just wanted clarification for Jeff.
Well, the only thing I, I want this to go into effect. But in that motion, I'd like to see that it be tied to the budget every year. If you adopt the grid without tying it to the budget, the grid goes off. You see where I come from? That that grid be approved every year within the budget.
In other words, what the grid's already set up to do with the next five years, every, every year, it still has to be approved?
Yes. I'm trying to protect our city.
Yeah, I mean, this, this is back to what I'm saying, is, is, it's not an, it's not an unreasonable request, because of what?
Pardon me, let me just make a point of order here real quick. Mayor Sherrill, are you making a motion to amend the motion that's on the floor?
I did not say that, I'm making a discussion. I'm discussing, we're, we're in discussion right now. I'm not making another motion.
All right, great, that's just what I wanted to know.
I'm not making another motion, but I recommend it.
Does it speak to the purpose of having a step raise when you tie it to the budget?
Yes.
Yes.
Because the whole purpose of the step raise is that it, it is not included. We can always go back and amend this if we need to vote on it, if it becomes an issue, but having a step raise becomes obsolete if you're just tying it to the budget. If it's just something that's proved every year and every, it, it kind of defeats the whole purpose of the step raises, I understand it. So if somebody wants to make a motion to amend it, they can, but I should not change my original.
Well, regardless, if you have a deficit at some point, we're going to make some sort of accommodation.
Absolutely.
If you have a deficit, it's gonna affect the whole city.
Okay, are you making that motion only for the three months and next year?
I'm making the, the step raise goes in for five, for three months and five years.
You're tied it for five years?
That's the grid setup.
The grid is set up for 10, the analysis was set up for five. The grid is a 10-year, 10-step. And that's one of the issues we need to clarify over and over and over. This is not a yearly grid, it's a step. Whatever evaluation the chief of police and the fire chief have, they have to, to meet that minimum evaluation to proceed to the next grid. Now, you're gonna expect that to happen on a yearly basis, but it may not.
Hey, I have a motion on the floor to set the grid for, for now.
Is it proper for me to speak for just a moment about nothing really, what you're saying, just in general?
I'll let you have one minute.
Okay. And John Neal, representing the Harrison firefighters, and I believe police officers also, as well as the FOP right here. What we have to understand is, I think, everybody has valid points, and we wanna be fiduciary responsible. You owe it to the taxpayers. But we also know what this tax means and what it's gonna be for. What we have to do, I've watched this in Harrison for 20 years, is everybody's always looking at the downside, let's look at progressive nature, that the tax, taxes will increase, we will hold our own. If the time comes, when we hit 2008, the crash in 2008, then I think everybody, everybody in the audience here understands, every employee understands, that boom, hey, we gotta stop it this year, everybody freezes. I don't believe you have to cut anybody or take anything away, it's just there's no increases or everything stops. We understand emergencies and the issues that come up. What the city also has to understand is that, but this tax has taken a tremendous burden off the general fund in itself. You know, just alone, you're looking at your pension costs, which firefighters pay 8.5, you pay 6, they pay 2.5, you pay 6, they get social security, we don't. This is coming out of this fund right here. You're paying our pensions out of there, I, we have no problem with that. And the other thing is, you have insurance that's coming out of this, and we're looking for high costs, police vehicles gotta have almost $200,000. You say anywhere from $600,000 to $900,000 is back in the general fund that wasn't there before the tax was passed. You were pulling down the general fund to buy this stuff.
Okay, Joe.
Okay, but that, that's what I had to say, and we need to look positive in our community. But that money's in the general fund where it wasn't before.
The one thing I would like to see, too, as a council, is to assist any way we can live in the city trying to manage these injuries. And I said, I don't know if it's the wellness plan or whatever.
I've suggested wellness.
But we're going to have to take some sort of action. And that, that's where we can make a motion back on this.
Okay, we have a motion on, on the floor, and a second on the floor. Now let me follow the motion. You read back, yeah?
I, I need, I need one point of clarification on, on the, the grid. Is it, is it 10? 10-year grid? So.
A 10-step grid, not a 10-year.
That's right. Thank you for that.
10-step grid.
Okay, motion is to approve 10-step grid as presented, excluding certificate pay to begin October 1st, 2016.
Longevity pay is.
That was built in.
Is built in. We will have to consider certificate pay on its own in a separate motion.
Okay, we have a motion, and everybody understands the motion. And have a second. Okay, we'll call a roll on it. Brian Oswald.
Yes.
Bill Boswell.
Yes.
Joel Williams.
Yes.
Dana Taylor.
Yes.
Brian Herring.
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger.
A big yes.
Mitch Magnus.
Not useful, my son.
Johnny Savage Ebsen. Social basis.
My challenge is this, and it's simple. Have the guts to fix it if it gets out of control. Do not wait until you're upside down. Have the guts to fix it. That starts out with you all, too.
Yes, sir.
It's a huge responsibility, because you guys work for the taxpayers of the city of Harrison, and you gals. Have the guts to fix it. Do not let it get out of control. If you don't.
They'll do us a favor and help us.
Trust me, I will.
They will, if, uh.
Thank you, Bill.
I have a rough draft of the budget, I was gonna cover this later, since we're in this right now. Cover someone else. And I've talked to both chiefs, they submitted their budgets to me, and Luke put them all together, and submitted me a rough draft today. But, and I've also already gone back to the chiefs, knowing this is gonna pass, and should have passed. And if it didn't pass, that they will have to do some work on their budgets. But this, these figures in there, they, it's a deficit, but we have ways to take care of that deficit, and they will present a balanced budget with those, these pay raises in. And they're very well-deserved, and I'll echo Mr. Boswell's things. The city going forward will watch every penny, whether or not. We all do that, we did on a daily basis. And thank you, council, for giving the raises.
Okay. Do we need, do we need to resolve the certificate of pay?
I guess we had to resolve it.
Do you wanna continue on with that right now, or?
Yes, we have to do that for, in one. It is part of the package.
Okay, then, back to you then.
It's up to the council if you wanna, if someone wants to make the motion, or if we wanna, I don't wanna table the issue, I want to resolve.
I will speak for it. I will speak for it. Leaving the certificate pay in there, it's 8, 8,500, it's well, well worth 8,500.
I will make a motion to.
I'll say that, yeah. I'll say it.
I think it's well, I think it's well, it's money well-spent. The whole issue is, is it should not have slipped up on us.
You're right, you're right, you're right. Okay, we have a motion to leave the certificate in there, and we have a second in front of the discussion on this issue. There being none, all are very by?
Aye.
Oh, same. That motion carried also. Thank you. Mr. Magnus?
The last thing I will say, in committee, I will bring up this insurance, and I will get with Luke, but when we get to committee, I am, committee's gonna have to review options that we're going to support. I will ask Luke, after we get our quote from the carrier, to also ask them, what can we do to save off these increases?
Well, I will say.
Carrier?
I will say, United.
And we switched from a different agent.
We have changed agent of record. It evolved, we had an insurance meeting within the city, and we decided to change our agent of record, and our new agent, I hate to throw dates out there, you know how I only, like I said, it never happens, but first next month sometime, they're supposed to get us our calls. So by the time that we get the budget to you, we should have actually the figures in there right. So hopefully that, that will happen, but we've had some discussion within the city on our carrier. Right now, they wanna stay the same, but we have not got the figures back. By the time we do, do other different carriers, and we get the comparison figures in there, that may change. Already word is around the city that they wanna change, because nobody wants a 30% increase in the grid. So hopefully by committee meetings, we'll have such a voice.
And I would, I'd like to make one last comment. Luke's job is the conscience, in regard to this, the fiscal conscience of this, of this city. It's his, as he said, his responsibility to make sure. And when we give him something not exactly chicken, and he's expecting to make chicken salad, it's difficult. So he's got a very difficult job in that regard, and I would caution everybody, I've heard rumors that different members of council, or different members of the administration were against the pay raise. Nobody has been against the step grid, not a single person. It's the dynamics of making it work within the tax structure that we have. And if we would, you know, the, the community passed a 0.5% tax, and it serves as well. It would be better served with a higher tax, obviously. That's not what we've got.
When's our insurance renewed? December 1?
January 1st.
We have to decide by?
We'll have to decide, hopefully early November, because early, or enrollment's usually the first week of December.
Early November.
And options for insurance are not, as we discussed last year at this time, and we didn't do anything. Options are not prevalent for this end.
Part of the reason we changed broker of record was because we didn't feel like we were getting information timely as well. And last year, I remember, we kind of waited all the way up until the middle of November because we weren't getting information from our broker. Since we changed, we, we feel that we're gonna get it sooner, and hopefully have some information to present to you all a little sooner, and decide amongst, kind of, all of the departments have gotten together, we've come up with a health insurance committee, an insurance committee, to kind of let the voices be heard from all of the departments, with their frustration or their acceptance of different types of insurance. And I, part of the reason we changed also was because it hurt some disapproval of our current broker, and I did not know that. So since we got everybody together, we heard all that information, we knew it was low last year, so that's just part of the reasons why we changed. And hopefully we'll get information sooner and make sure best decision.
Any possible, I don't know, I would say, maybe we meet again in committee in three weeks.
I'll try to get, whatever we get.
It would be nice to have at least some good solid discussion stuff in three weeks.
I will try to get as much information to you all as soon as we get it.
But it's, it's going to affect all the citizens.
Okay, but I could give you anything else?
Yeah.
I'd like to say something, Mr. Mayor Ford, you're in charge of all this. Dealing, dealing with dollars and cents and dealing with taxpayer money is about sometimes the most thankless job that any city councilman.
the most thankless job that any city councilman or anybody that works within an organization. Batman who was there did a yeoman's job and to make this thing a reality.
Thank you.
You're not getting the right...
The two of us understand what an asset you have to do.
Oh, yeah.
Without him, I could not have done anything that I've...
Okay. Miss, Mary Jean Krieger.
Hey, I'm just adding, I don't have any complaints.
Ryan, your twenty seconds.
Ryan, I'm...
Just wanted to mark that in the red document.
I'm a replacement up here.
Mr. Oswald. We have a reallocation for infrastructure approval that hang in committee. I'm glad we talked about that. Just to refresh your memories, this is to move an extra hundred fifty thousand dollars into the main list that you rehab project. Just if you have any questions, I'd be happy to...
We can get a motion?
Yep.
I'll make a motion. We go ahead and approve the infrastructure reallocation for...
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion on this issue? There being no discussion, all in favor, bye?
Aye.
All opposed, same? We have a name.
Thank you.
Anything else? For someone?
No.
All right, Mrs. Taylor, you're up.
We had a dog licensing ordinance that was going to be voted on tonight, but due to some information that was given to me today in a meeting that I had with the mayor, Mary Hickman, police chief, Jeff was here and Christine was here. I request that we table this vote one more time until I can get with Van to iron out some legal issues that we could possibly have with it.
I'll make a motion to table.
I have a motion? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, all right. Motion, the way it's running. Table and second, no, no discussion, all in favor, bye?
Aye.
All opposed, same?
I apologize, Mayor.
I guess I say something.
Okay, okay.
I'm just practicing.
There been, any old business we need to bring up since we got several things behind us? Okay. If anybody read Jeff's new notice for council agenda, it's not on the original, but there is a millage thing that we have to do every year. Is everybody familiar with this millage? We have to pass this on to the council every year. It is.
Move to approve.
Okay, I have a motion to approve that. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
Is it the same thing?
Yes, same. Is that a resolution?
Yes, it is. It is a resolution. All in favor, bye?
Aye.
All opposed, same? Okay, I talked a little bit about the budget. Do have a rough draft of it. I don't want it out right now, but hopefully if we get the insurance and all that stuff, we'll have it by committee. Okay, we have a, does everybody get a little notice, email notice about an invite to municipal league meeting over in Gaston's?
Yeah.
Okay, I need to, Christine needs to know who's going by Tuesday so we can get that back, back over there. That's a free mail and they're going to discuss legislative policies and stuff that they're going to bring up. Also, they moved the municipal, the regular meeting to back to January this year. They had it December last year and now they moved it back to January, so I'm just throwing that out. Of course, we have, if anybody wants to go, you need to get ahold of Christine so we can get that book.
Where's it going to be?
Little Rock. I want to, tiny in my comments, I want to congratulate FedEx. They're not here tonight, but they took on a portion of industrial park road for a street cleanup. They had about twenty out there the other day. And believe it or not, I got an email today that they will take four streets. They said they went over so well out there with their company that a lot of the other different divisions went off streets and helped get the city clean. And it's a big plus to our city.
I'd like for someone to adopt the flower deals in front of City Hall.
Well, we got some right there.
There's still weeds growing here.
Yeah, there are reasons. I can't get anybody to adopt those. So if anybody out there wants to adopt them, I mean, we're willing to do that.
Revolting?
But anyway, I want to recognize FedEx.
I don't do manual labor. I did all this.
Okay, I will open it up to council. If council has any comments they'd like to make in this town.
I, I just want to echo what Bill said. I, I think that one of the biggest stewards is, I'm with him one hundred percent. His biggest frustration, and I think Luke does get a bad rep because of what he said tonight, and sometimes he has to be the bearer of bad news, being the finance guy. Luke does a tremendous job. But the biggest problem we have is there's a breakdown in communication. I think it's gotten better. I think we've addressed that. I'm definitely solid. I've made some stuff in my email a lot sooner than I was. But constantly it's been through, through the last year, we've got to do better with communication. It's not one person's fault. We just can't keep walking in and finding out things, especially after it's going through committee, going through the process. And we come to council and then, hey, here's a new thing. We've got to do better. And I think, I think that the citizens expect this. I think we expect better and we need to, we need to be better. So I'm just echoing what Bill already said. I just, it's been, it's been a frustration, I think, with everybody. And I think we just want to make sure that we are, I don't think anybody's not above par. I think the issue is we are just lacking in communication. It's not as prevalent as I think that we would like. That's my opinion.
Have you ever had anybody call you five minutes to five? Have you ever had anybody call you five minutes to five?
And I think, I think I might have to tell you.
And then, could you come, could you do something for me tonight? It happens. And, and believe it or not, we try every day. All the department heads try. It ain't going to slip though. Believe you me, nobody's perfect.
And I know that. And I'm just saying we need better. And it's not the five minutes to five things that we're addressing. It's the things that was normal a lot longer that we found out.
That's true, that's true. I look at these figures every day and Luke does too, and I look at them all day long. That's why my, and everything seems to be in the red. That's why I'm seeing red spots, I guess, right now. But it's, it all worked out for the better and I congratulate everybody. Okay, I will open it up for those in the audience. Oh, Mr. Neal, you want to say something else? You had your one minute.
Can we take a vote? If he gets a second?
Ooh. Welcome. There was another boy gave me a minute and he caught a lot of pride on that. I want to thank Wade. Wade, for your crew in Southern Hills. The water went out. Nice thing was I was leaving town that day, so I didn't have to sit around. But I did take, I did take his boys some chicken. They tell you that? That was me, his boy, too. They were right down the street from me, but I appreciated them being out. They did a good job at taking care of business. And on behalf of the firefighters and police officers, we want to thank you. We've always been devoted. We, we know the citizens pay our taxes and we thank you all very much. In my opinion, this may be the best councils I've ever seen, not because of this, but because you all actually communicate. And we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Okay, anybody else in the audience? Yes, sir.
I was wanting to talk about the dog. If you guys wanted to pass. Isn't there one already on the books for that?
There is one on the books, yes. But this will be a tag or less.
Okay, and it's to keep the dogs from being abandoned and neglecting and stuff like that, right?
There's a lot of the same normal pleasure in the new ordinance they want to put in there. So it's not going to change much other than getting tagged mainly.
And what, what's the point? What's the reason for it?
I think one of the reasons, if I may, Mr. Mayor, one of the reasons was to put more of the extent of dog ownership on the dog owner. So this...
But the people that are abandoning and letting their dogs run the street are not going to pay the fee. They're not going to take the dog to the vet. They're neglecting the dog in the first place. So the point is, the only thing you're going to do is hurt the honest working people that actually care about their dogs. But right now I have four and I'm foster caring five for a rescue group. Now, none of, uh, two of my dogs...
Matt, before you go ahead and talk, your name, sir?
James Henson.
Thank you.
Several of the dogs are not fazed, so that'd be several hundred dollars for me to help foster care for a rescue group. But there's nothing and there's never been and there never will be anything on the feral cats that cause more issues than the dogs doing this to the city. So I mean, if you're going to do this with the vets, why not have the vets go ahead and set something up where they have to do the same thing as the cats? One thing I'm saying.
I understand what you're saying. I would say one problem at a time, but that's a, that's a...
The cat problems, since, since I was on the council.
But that's just, you know, one of the things we were trying to do is address this issue.
Addressing the dogs isn't going to help the issue.
It doesn't address the feral cat issue.
And the stray dogs, and like I said, the stray dogs...
Anytime, anytime feral cats, I always say, oh, now it's a party.
But I mean, the stray dogs, I mean, that's abandoned by people.
Right.
They're not going to spend the money on the dog if they're just going to abandon it in any way.
Well, again, I think in regard to council, I don't want to speak for everyone. In my, in my case, I wanted to see that the dog owner, that we did something to put the onus on dog owners and that we're hopefully going to hold those that don't tag them responsible.
Who's going to enforce it?
It'll be enforced by ordinance, by ordinance.
I understand that, but who's going to go around check the dogs?
It'll be more or less animal control. I don't want to get really into depth because...
I mean, I just wonder, is he going to knock on doors and say, hey, is your dog registered?
No, no, that will not happen.
So there's going to be no enforcement?
Well, okay, the enforcement's in the ordinance. If you get caught, there will be the enforcement because you're going to be out of pocket a little bit. Are we going to knock on doors? No, we don't knock on doors because you got your grass too high either. But if somebody complains about it or somebody complains about a dog, then you will be...
A good example is, is my, I have a family member, he has his dog registered. The people across the street don't and it runs loose. But he, when this ordinance goes into effect, this family member is going to call and say, the person across the street, their dog's constantly in my yard, it doesn't have a tag.
But that's already a run in monthly.
Again, it's, it's addressed in the ordinance that we currently have. And that, that was the purpose.
And then one other thing, on your, talking about your fire budget and everything, you guys kept going back and forth on the insurance issue. Even without the sales tax, you still have to pay the insurance.
Well, you're exactly right. But how we play the insurance is the question, or what carrier we get or percentages that the city pays per employee is a lot of the questions too. We will have to address all those issues.
Yeah, and that's what I said though. I mean, but to cut there, to say that they can't get the raise because of the insurance, well, for the sales tax, they couldn't get the raise and it was insurance was still going to be the same hike. I don't think it's fair to make them pay their insurance out of the sales tax that was put in place to benefit them.
Now, where would that money come from?
General fund like it came before.
Well, actually, we're giving money out of general fund.
Well, I mean, that's just part of, I mean, because you don't set up a special fund for everybody else's insurance.
You're saying the money should come out of general fund to pay the fire department and the police department's insurance.
Yes, the same as everybody other departments.
I see.
Yes, sir.
It does, because we give them a lot and the general fund gives them...
I understand that, but it's the way it's always been. They've always given them a lot and...
Because that's the way it's always been. Once the sales tax happened, everything changed.
That's by ordinance. The ordinance, the law, the, the ordinance that was passed by the citizens to care of their...
They, they make sure that a certain percentage comes out of the general fund and goes directly to the police and fire department.
Okay, because I mean, they kept saying, well, insurance, insurance can't be raised if the insurance, insurance, insurance. But if that's coming out of general fund, then that shouldn't affect the sales tax rate.
Well, air department pays, believe it or not.
Yeah, I know.
And it's in their budget.
I've been over the budget.
Yeah, yeah. And for the police and fire not to pay it out of their budget is not right for the public parks or whoever else.
Wouldn't that be separate budget than the sales tax budget?
That was a thought, really.
We didn't have a sales tax.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
On your insurance?
Stand up here. Say here, y'all.
I did make you stand up. You need to really think about your insurance earlier than September for the following year because you've got corporations who have to sign up that first week and second week of November. And as a city employee's wife and somebody who works in a corporate office for a company, you're not giving us a chance to evaluate what's best for our families. So you guys really need to get on the ball in February of next year for this year.
Actually, we start in February this year.
Why don't we have a solution?
Well, we, believe it or not, have you ever worked with an insurance company?
Oh, yes, sir, I have. I work in the corporate world, so yes.
I'm not going to say much more. But anyway, we have been working on them every day almost. I'm not going to say every day.
Well, I'd like to see, let's see what you've done then over these last ten months, eight months.
Well, has not, we had a meeting, hasn't it? Anything been passed on?
Well, part of it is we can't get information from our insurance carrier. That's why we switched.
But that was last year. Now we're this year.
No, that's right.
We did switch.
Like last week's...
Yeah, we did switch last week.
We could not get information from them. The information that we did get was old unless you really want to go through claims reports. It's really all I have to give out right now.
But you started in February for this year.
Yes, we, we request...
I see an issue with that. You guys should have been more proactive. Why weren't you sourcing it? Why didn't you put it out to bid? Those insurance companies are going to bid on it.
But they can't give us information. They can't give us quotes.
They won't, they won't bid unless we have information to give them.
You should have your information if you started in February.
Well, we had last year's information. Nobody will bid on last year's information.
Yes, they will. Yes, they will. They will do it.
They won't turn...
Because that's your benchmark. You know how many employees you have today, do you not? Okay. You know what services you offered last year, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's what you go bid with. I don't believe that.
All right, anybody else? Yes, sir.
My name's Rick Schoenberg, I'm backstreet trader downtown. First of all, I appreciate you guys passing that for the police officers here in town. We do appreciate as taxpayers this be the class A6. It's really been nice since they passed it that we're seeing the same faces in cars. One of the issues I had beforehand was when you call a police officer, he doesn't know where the street is because he's so new. We're losing our old past clear. That's just one I was, that, I want to throw that in there. On the dog thing, four years ago, I came into the city hall to get a tag and they went, we know nothing about it. Redundancy in making new ordinances on top of the old ordinances, on top of the new ones, you know, going back and forth and back and forth. There's nobody really enforcing it. You're letting the public do it. I had no problem paying the ten dollars back then and get the tag, but it seems to drop through the, you know, through cracks. Who's going to enforce it? Okay, now you've got to go to a vet. All right, so you're piling it off. The council did this once before just with this business permit licenses here in town. And we're going to, we've got an ordinance saying what it's going to take care of. Then after one year, the city found out it cost too much to deal with and they were going to throw it out. And they take that now instead of that, they didn't want to, they let the chamber of commerce have it because they didn't want to pit a chamber anymore. And that there's still no enforcement of it. And Dana Taylor was telling me the other day that she still hasn't got a letter from the chamber or dues. They're not doing their job. And this is something, when this, when the council, I mean, it's true for this, decided to give it to the chamber of commerce, that me as a business owner in this town looks at the redundancy of everything that goes on. But there's a lot of bookkeepers in this town. There is a lot of taxpayers in this town. And the city could have just let that out and said, okay, on a hundred percent scale, we're going to let you bid what you want to take care of. So if somebody comes in and says, I'll do it for sixty percent, the city gets forty instead of going, here, we're going to take a hundred percent new attempt to the chamber of commerce. Well, let's see, we need how much for the certificates? Well, let's see, we need how much for the certificates, we need this. Well, I'll tell you what, forty percent of the eight thousand dollars pretty much would take part of your certificate money away. My main issue here is every time you guys pass one of these ordinances over the top of another ordinance, and nobody takes and enforces them again. I think the city sales permit should be either A, to where the city makes a little bit of money on it, or throw it out. It's not enforced whatsoever. You guys have a permanent yard sale that's been going on for six years over here in Pine Street Mini Store. Nobody enforced it. Finally, Dan got game too. Go ahead and do the sales tax license, and the city has issued him now a permit. Ah, okay, everything's good. City also has an ordinance, say, anytime a building changes business status, that has to come up to code. ADA bathrooms, fire sprinkler suppression systems. The law says that that permit should be on the wall at all times, nobody enforces that. I went and paid my property tax the other day, and I just sort of happened to see that, I, I talked to him, and I said, well, on Pine Street Mini Storage, is that a class, what's the classifications of that? That's class D, class D classification commercial real estate. The product, I own a class A retail right here, a block away from me. And that, that building, that property is worth five times my property value. I paid more taxes than that whole place together. That place is now turned into a class A retail, because you guys gave them a permit to do business on that property. It's not a storage unit anymore. The redundancy of everybody keeps putting these things out there and making the issues of, we've got to put a new dog ordinance in. The cats, you know, you know, they're, they're...